No, I think we're good. No, this- Ah, perfect. Okay. Are we on mic?
Yes, we are.
All right, it is six fourteen PM on Thursday, June twenty eighth, and I'd like to call to order a workshop of the Newmarket School Board. We'll begin this workshop as we do all meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We apologize for a little bit of a late start. We were supposed to have gotten started at six, but there was a building committee meeting that ran over a little bit, so we're starting now. Just to sort of review why we're holding these workshops, on June first, the school board had a retreat, and one of the objectives moving forward after the retreat was to look into creating a strategic plan for the district. And one of the action items was that Meredith was going to coordinate some information sessions for the board with consultants to provide us with information about that process. And tonight, we have Mark Dolan, a consultant from the New Hampshire School Boards Association to walk us through information on strategic planning. Mark, I will turn things over to you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I would like to start off with a short video, a three-minute video. I show this usually to boards, and I show this during the training that I give for the School Boards Association. It's kind of what I hope is an inspiration to this process.
The actual moonshot is wonderful, inspirational, poetic, beautiful, workable, great technical challenges, genuine heroism. It brought the world together. But think about the Polynesian island on the dugout canoe, deciding one day they were going to go that way. You know, I've never been that way before. You know, even if there was anything that I didn't know before. It was amazing and achieved to work. People can set their minds to magical, seemingly impossible ideas, and then through science and technology, bring them to reality. And that then sets other people on fire that other things that look impossible might be accomplishable.
Galileo's such a hero, you know, and thinking big. And what he represents to me is both curiosity and wonder that humanity had, that he had, that pushed him and drove himself to invent and work on the first telescopes that allowed us to see the moon, and here we are.
His aviation pioneer is one of those figures who figured out how to fly an airplane. Right? How to fly an airplane. It was amazing and crazy and wonderful. They wanted to explore.
Many years ago, the great British explorer George Mallory, who wants to die on Mount Everest, was asked to fly it if he wanted to fly it. He said, because it is there.
There's so many challenges in the world, and you can feel daunted by that, you know, and you're oppressed by that, or you kind of say, how might we think differently about this?
Everyone else in the world is working on the next ten percent. If you can be the one that delivers that ten times, you have a chance to do the changes. If you want cars to run at fifty miles per gallon, fine, you could retool your car. But if I tell you it has to run on a gallon of gas for five hundred miles, you have to start over.
You need a lot of courage in this work, and you need a lot of persistence. And one of the things that's really critical is not only have you courage, you keep trying every day or thinking big. Even if you don't really a hundred percent believe it's possible, like, you might think, this might be possible. Have the courage to try. That's how the greatest things will happen.
You don't spend your time being bothered. Then you can't teleport from here to Japan, because you're supporting these things that's possible. Moonshot making is choosing to be bothered by them.
We choose to go to the moon in this decade and do the other thing, not because they are easy, but because they are hard.
Humanity's progress has been a series of amazing audacious things when a very small person puts a great big grand. And we are a species of moonshots. And to me, that's a really amazing point of inspiration. I think our ambitions are a glass ceiling. We can accomplish.
When you find your passion and you're unstoppable, you make amazing things happen. It's been true throughout history.
I believe in the human spirit, and I believe that there are always going to be crazy people who get out of bed one morning and say, you know what? I think I can build a space shuttle. I hope so too. But I think that if we become afraid to take these great big risks, we stop inspiring, we stop achieving things. And the biggest nightmare is that we won't have our tanks to solve the daily challenges. When Kennedy said that we would put a man on the moon, it's about the fact that he said, we don't know how to do this yet, and we're gonna do it anyway. And that sense chills up everybody's. Because if that happens, what couldn't we?
So, what I like about that video is it talks about thinking big, taking risks, having courage to try something that maybe hasn't been done before, if it's been thought of as impossible. This process has built into it the opportunity to do that for schools, school districts. I try to bring an innovative, as well as an appreciative inquiry, approach to this, and I'll tell you what that is in a minute. So it's more than just a plan. More than, in the end, we have a document in our hand that we can plan and budget to. That is one part of it. But this process opens up a dialogue with all the stakeholders in town about a desired future state. Where do we want to be three to five years from now? Maybe even ten years, although that's a little harder to grasp sometimes. But the world is changing. I don't need to tell anybody that. And this is an opportunity. It's an opportunity now to address those changes and build into the plan ways that students can be prepared for the changes that are occurring right now and will occur as they graduate and go out into the workforce. So this process also takes a look at what direction are you headed in now? How do we address those changes? And maybe adjust the direction we're heading in. Perhaps we're not heading in the direction we need to based on the change, you know, in the world and in the job market. Set priorities. Many of the plans that I've worked on, or I've come to work with school districts that already have a plan, and boy, it's unmanageable. It's just got too many things in it. So we talk about the vital few things. I call them focus areas in this process. How do we set those priorities? Put money, people, energy, and resources behind them. And then ultimately, we document these in a plan. We communicate that with all the stakeholders, all right? Start to build what I call advocacy, alignment, shared understanding of where the school district needs to go. And most importantly, take action. Plans sometimes have a lot of energy behind them, but they don't get acted upon. And they lose momentum, they sit on the shelf, things like that, so. Creating the future of schools. That's kind of the subtitle of this presentation. This process that I use, and I've been using it for, as you can see, a little over ten years, and it's changed. I continually refine it as I work with school districts. It's more than just looking at what's not working in the district and how do we fix what's not working. I refer to that as problem solving. We focus more on what do we want to create and bring to life that doesn't exist? And we do that based on, I mentioned appreciative inquiry, based on your strengths. What's working well in the district now that we can build on? Rather than focusing on what isn't working and how can we bring that to where it already needed to be? So that's a little different approach. And I'll talk more about that as I get into the details of the process. So here's a high-level flow chart of the process. You could think of it as six individual steps. It's really not. It's multiple steps within that. But I kind of categorize it at a high level. I'll dig into each of these in more detail. I guess the point I want to leave you with is I use a four-month process, all right? My experience, it used to be six months. That would become seven or eight months. And what happens is people lose interest, momentum is lost. So we try to target four months. So if you're wondering about a timeline, think four months. I'll give you a little bit more information. So that means we need to have at least two or three meetings per month to keep that momentum going. When do we start? A lot of times, that depends on when you want to start. There's no perfect time, but I ask you to consider your budget cycle. I just got finished working with the Raymond School District, and they really want to implement things now because it's in the plan. They have to wait for the budget to be passed, put it in the budget. So it's really a year and a half to two years out. And that's disappointing. It's just the nature of the budget cycle. If you can bring things to the next budget cycle that you've put in the plan, you get a head start. So think about that as to when do we start this process? First meeting I typically like to meet with are you folks. Okay? Superintendent, school board. Find out why you want to do this, what's happening, what's your, I call it the current reality. Depending on whether this is just a two- or three-hour meeting or a half-day retreat, will dictate whether or not we get into some of these other things. So let's say it is a four-hour, five-hour retreat. We'll talk about vision and values. What are the values of the school district? And you may already have those written down. Great. We'll look at them and make sure they're still legitimate. We'll talk about a vision. We won't come up with a vision statement, but we'll start to build the elements of a vision that will get turned over to a strategic planning committee. And I'll talk about that in a minute. For this retreat, again, if we have the time to dedicate, we'll talk about strategic priorities and start to talk about focus areas from a leadership's perspective. And then we'll agree on a timeline and how do we establish this committee, so some of the details of the process. The rest of the effort and the process gets turned over to the planning committee. So as I said here, they do the heavy lifting. Strategic Planning Committee is made up of members of the board, certainly the superintendent, principals, teachers, parents, curriculum directors, and community members. There's no ideal number. I like between eight and twelve to be a committee size. You know, it helps with some of the small group activities that we do. They're charged with developing the plan. At their first meeting, they'll talk about what's the best method to gather community input. So early in this process, we'll have what I call a community forum. Invite the community to the auditorium, to the school, to talk about things that are important to them, about the school. So I develop a question guide for the committee. So they ask the questions, they listen, they document, and they use that information along with the leadership's information to start to build the plan. So they're hearing both from leadership and the community before they actually sit down and start to build the plan. They will determine actual goals and strategies, and then they will take the vision framework that the leadership has put together and craft a vision statement. Now, this is assuming you have nothing. If you have nothing, this is the process I use. If you currently have a plan, maybe it's a little outdated. You have a vision. Okay, so you currently don't have a strategic plan. You're looking to build one. So this applies to starting with a blank sheet of paper. Any questions? So this is one of the first steps. I'll go into the details of each of those six steps. So again, the pre-meeting, as I mentioned. If you have existing goals, we'll talk about them, talk about process, schedule, and then again, establishing a committee. What's very important in this is communicating what you're doing, more than just in the minutes of the board meeting. So use your existing communication venues, websites, school websites, superintendent's blog, whatever you may use to say, this is what we're doing, folks. You can use that to solicit committee members. That's one way. There's other ways you can reach out to people that you know would be a good committee member. But communication can't be overemphasized so that you don't end up with a plan that nobody knew about. I didn't know about this, why weren't we invited? So very open communication, very collaborative is the way I call it. Once a committee begins their work, they're going to be looking at relevant data, school performance data. You know, how are we doing? The good, the bad, and the ugly, all right? And the questions that I like to pose right at the beginning is, it's part of the, it ties back to the video that I showed. What are the skills, knowledge, and habits our students need to compete out in the real world? Are we preparing them for that? And then if not, how do we redesign what we're currently doing, educational experiences, to better prepare them? All right, so that opens up the aperture pretty wide to think about something maybe we're not doing that we might need to be doing. Technology certainly is a big piece of this. The students having choice and voice is a big part of it. So there's a lot behind those two questions. We spend a lot of time as a committee talking about that. Now the forum. So getting community input can be done in a number of ways. Some school districts have used surveys. From my experience, the results of those surveys have been poor. Not a lot of people participate, and those that do seem to use that as a way to talk about negative. I prefer, and certainly up to you, let's get in a room and talk face to face. Let's bring the community in, welcome them in, introduce them to the plan, the committee, and then solicit their input on, it's usually only two questions. What's working well and what challenges should be addressed? And I ask the committee member to take notes. Usually, we set up a Google Docs. Everybody has a netbook that they can, one committee member is writing it into the Google Docs, the other one is listening and making eye contact and kind of facilitating the discussion. Okay, and that begins the process of bringing in the larger community. And a lot of times, that can change the way people are thinking about things, or it may validate the way they're thinking. And then taking that information, this is the appreciative inquiry part, where we do what I call a SOAR process. For those of you that have done strategic planning, you've probably heard of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I used to use that. I don't use it anymore. I use strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results. So, you know, it isn't a rose-colored glasses and we're ignoring what's not working. It's just not putting all of our energy into that and putting our energy into the strengths. So it's a strength-based approach to planning. Again, this is the committee. At some point, I expect the board members to, or the superintendent, to give periodic updates to the board. So in four months, I don't know how many times a board would meet, so you might not get a lot of opportunity. But somewhere in the middle, halfway point, let the board know where the committee is focusing their attention, what are some of the focus areas you're thinking about, just to get some feedback from the board members that aren't on the committee, so they're not surprised by, again, anything at the end that says, oh, why'd you do that? And then we build on that SOAR exercise, S-O-A-R, and start to build a vision statement, all right? I like to use something I call an elevator pitch. You've probably heard that. I've seen a lot of vision statements that are very wordy, and you can't remember what they say. And if you ask somebody what it is, they don't know what it is. Let's keep it short. And if you were on an elevator ride, how would you tell somebody that just moved into Newmarket what the vision of the school is? Right? Something catchy and compelling. It's almost like a slogan, but it's still, it's a vision. Very interesting part of the process. Kind of fun because you're creating, you're thinking five, six years out of what's possible. So then we take all that and we really get down to business here. Now we need to, we've got all these ideas, community, leadership, right? Well, we can't put all that in the plan. So how do we prioritize and hone the most important things? And that's where this starts. We start to bridge that gap between here's where we are today, here's where we want to be. Typical focus areas that end up in plans are ones I've listed here. There's an occasional facilities. Raymond actually had in communication and safe schools. Those are issues they're dealing with. And we had three teachers on the committee, and they actually developed their own focus areas from a teacher perspective. And it was all about the students feeling safe and the teachers feeling safe. So that didn't come from the leadership retreat because they didn't have that perspective. So that was great to see that. And again, this also includes, what are we not going to do? What's not going to be in this plan? All right, so it's a decision you have to make not to do everything that you want to do in this plan. And I always say the plan is flexible, it's fluid, it's probably going to change after a couple of years because you're learning. It's not set in stone, but it is the plan for the district. And so we write goal statements and pretty typical, smart, you know, we use a smart approach. Very important, the time bound. What do we want to do in year one to meet the goal? What do we want to do in year two? So we lay out, almost lay out a schedule. The plan has a high-level schedule built into it. And certainly measurable goals are important as well. Then the board, the plan is presented to the board for approval. Committee has completed their work at that point. And then this is where the action, school leadership, takes over. I usually recommend, and it's not part of this process, developing an action plan for each of the focus areas. So you have a focus area, goals, and strategies, one, two, three years. The devil's in the details. You need to develop action plans, who's going to do it? So assign responsibilities. It can't all be the superintendent or the board. And certainly communicate to the larger community and build in periodic reviews. One simple way to do that is put it on the school board agenda. Status update. The board is asking for feedback on how it's going. It seems to work well. So this is a, what I typically do at the end of work with a school district is I'll create a story map. This is one that I did for Claremont a couple of years ago that they can use, they can put it in their strategic plan if they want. They can use it as a communication vehicle. It kind of tells the story of how we got from where we were to the plan. So the process I use is visual. I'm a graphic facilitator, so I have big flip charts, templates that I use so that the group can see, the committee can see what we're working on, a lot of brainstorming, things like that. So very interactive. I use small groups as a way to efficiently get through building goals and strategies. It's difficult with a group, say, a committee of twelve, to try to get them to agree on a focus area or a goal statement within a focus area. So we break it out into small groups. Then that group will report out to the larger group. And within the larger group, I will hand out index cards that says, okay, while you're reviewing this goal statement and strategy from this small group, you're looking at it from the perspective of a student, of a teacher, of a parent. So rather than everyone looking at it from their perspective, I ask them to wear different hats, wear a different perspective. What would this goal statement mean to a teacher? What would this mean to a student, a parent, a community member? And that really gets the committee, who thinks they have this well-thought-out goals and strategies, to go, oh, we didn't think of that. We didn't think of it from that perspective. So that helps validate and bring in other perspectives. Only one time have I had a student on a strategic planning committee, but I'd love to have more. They bring an interesting perspective. At the community forum for Raymond, there was a student who was leading the table discussion. So it was great to have him there and his perspective on what's working, what are the challenges. So this process, key points to remember, that just the process, just doing this, plan is aside, just doing this can have a lot of benefit because you're starting to talk about what's important to the community, what's important to the school district. Sometimes it can have more, it can have, it can influence change more than just a plan because you're starting to talk about things that maybe you didn't talk about as a community. Very important that the plan not be in language that the normal community member couldn't understand, right? Multi-tiered support system, RTI, I forget what that stands for, but, okay. Teachers would know what that means. Community member looked at it and goes, I don't know what that is. So either we add into the plan a, like a glossary, a translation, or we just change what it means and put it in plain English. This process, four months, it's not an isolated event. It really needs to be part of a much bigger budgeting process, much bigger collaboration process. I recommend every three to five years to seriously revisit, three years probably, revisit the plan you have and talk about maybe overhauling it a little bit. And this is the plan for the district. Many times, school boards will say, we have goals. Superintendent has goals, and the district has goals. This is the plan for the district. There's no other plan that should be out there. We can incorporate goals into this certainly, but this is the plan for the district. And I think that is, that's my last slide.
One question that I had, Mark, is, you know, in terms of the deliverable plan itself, who's responsible within this framework to complete that document? How does that work?
Okay. Good question. I'm responsible for typing up the final plan, but I'll call it a draft. I won't say it's the one that's issued. The superintendent and leadership at that point will look at it and make sure that it's clearly understood. They'll put the final touch on it, I'll say, before it goes to the board. It won't be directly from me to the board. All right? And that's just the nature of, I want to make sure I've captured everything, and then they may want to slightly reword something for clarity. And they may want to add some detail to it that maybe wasn't in the committees, yeah, didn't have time to go into it. But, yeah, it's the superintendent that ultimately will deliver that final product. That's how I do it. But, you know, if you want to do something different, that's certainly fine. You know, we can change that part of it. But it isn't me to the board, is my point.
I think it makes sense.
What should a board have budget for a consulting fee for a project like this?
So New Hampshire School Boards Association charges five thousand dollars for this, flat rate. You know, four months, give or take. I don't worry about, I don't worry about the timeline as much as I want you to have a final product that works for you. All right, but we had to bound it at some point, but that's what they currently charge.
So you do this through the association?
Yeah, what happens is if a school board is interested or superintendent's interested in strategic planning, they will call the School Board Association, talk to the director. He'll contact me. We'll do all this groundwork, and then if it looks like we're going to go forward, the School Board Association will send out their contract. So it's their paperwork. Contract between the district, you know, the SAU and School Board Association. And my name's mentioned in it. I kind of let them handle that, you know, the contracting part. But that, yeah, I don't work independently on my own, for, at least for strategic planning. I do do facilitation. I've worked with Winnebago, as you can see, on, other than just strategic planning. But, yeah, you get to me through the School Boards Association. That's how I put it.
I was interested in the, a couple of comments you made about making a few, just a few priorities in the strategic planning process. I was also interested in the comment about the elevator talk which we used to do a preview of.
Yeah, yeah.
And when you talk about a few priorities, I mean, can you kind of just talk around that a little bit?
Sure, yeah. I'll tell you what I mean by that. There's no magic number, right? There's no magic number of focus areas. But when we go through this process and we talk about what was important to the community, leadership, and the committee, we tend to have a dozen or so of focus areas, right? From my experience, that's tough to manage. It's tough to budget, and you get caught up in having a little bit of progress on a lot of things. So when I say a few, we go through a process of prioritizing them. Few is usually three to five, all right? That's the ballpark. I've had to give you a number. But it's got to be manageable, all right? But it's got to be manageable, alright? So something might have to wait. Number six might have to wait because based on, and this is where the superintendent and leadership at the end might go, "I think we've taken on more, we might want to lob something off." It doesn't usually happen, but what happens is you spend too much energy, and the day-to-day is competing with this as well, right? The day-to-day priorities and things that are happening running the school. So I just recommend, whatever the committee feels are the vital few, let's put them in the plan. Three to five is usually a number of focus areas, because from that becomes, it can be multiple goals and multiple objectives. So you might think, "Three? Three focus areas?" Well, that could be a dozen or so strategies, four or five goal statements. So there's a lot of work just in those. So as we roll that out, the committee realizes, "Okay, I think we've got the right three to five." And in many cases, some of those complement one another. So as we're laying out, and we want to narrow down the vital few, some areas will complement one another, such as extended learning opportunities, well, we may want a higher position for that, and we're looking for giving students opportunities in the community to learn and work while they're learning, things like that. So sometimes, different areas will complement one another, and you'll want to include them in the plan. So the second question was the elevator. Did I answer your first one?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Can you, I suspect they're fairly common from school to school to school.
The focus areas?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you give me a common, just pull one out of your past that some school district adopted, so I can understand the scope of the statement?
The focus areas?
Yeah.
Okay. Typically, they're around student learning, a curriculum, instruction, assessment, always comes up. Teacher, professional development. Communication, both within the school and with the community. So community engagement is usually a big one. That's typically where you hear from the community, typically, not always. I don't want to broad-brush it, but we don't know what's going on at the school, you know? We'd like to hear more, so community engagement is typically one.
I don't, if I could run my train of thought.
Yep.
So, strategic planning, an objective would not be educational excellence?
That's too broad, but I like it. I like it, absolutely. It's a target.
Hard to measure.
Hard to measure, right.
Right. So you'd bring that down to, because we all want educational excellence.
Yeah.
You'd bring it down, how, what would be the next draw?
Let's say that was a focus area.
Yeah.
Educational excellence. Okay, great. So what does that involve? It involves a number of things. So let's build a goal statement around student achievement, curriculum, professional development, we can build it underneath that. What does excellence look like is where we'd go from there, because it is pretty broad.
Yeah, yeah.
And we talk about what does that look like. And it usually falls within teaching and learning, technology, to both help teach and learn, so that covers a lot. That may be your vision statement, that may be your elevator pitch, alright? But I'd want more than just that. I'd want more than just, "Oh, we're setting out to do, you know, excellence in education." I want a little bit more. Put the students in there. We want the students to, why do you want to have excellence in education? Sounds obvious, right? But what is the end result? Well, it's the student, right? Being ready, prepared. So, yeah, that's kind of how we go through it. I stay neutral on the content that the committee comes up with. So the word consultant is used more for the process than me telling you, "Well, I think you need to change your curriculum, or I think your instruction is not where it needs to be." That's not what I provide. I want to just make that clear. Alright, stay neutral in the content. I focus on efficiency, getting the process done, getting voices heard. Now the elevator pitch?
Well, you answered, you really answered.
Okay.
You got it, yeah, that's crisp.
Crisp, succinct.
Understandable.
Right. Right, people get it.
Yeah.
One-page strategic plan, too, is also something I advocate for, but it's not always possible.
Any other questions? Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we have a special business meeting starting at 7:00, but I seek a motion to adjourn the workshop at 6:46. Motion from Ms. McKinnney, a second from Mr. Kennison, to adjourn our workshop. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, and we will reconvene at 7 o'clock for a special business meeting.